So just do a quick introduction. I'm Andy Conroy, our Secretary Daniel Sancheck. We have Keith Lyon, Steve Ferguson, and Kathy Olson attending as the five-member board. And with that in mind, I have a spiel that I need to go through. We tried to shorten the spiel up, but it actually got longer. So be patient. Evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the City of Norwalk zoning Board of Appeals. For the record, we currently meet virtually on the Zoom platform rather than in person. To participate, you may use Zoom app on your device, or you may call in. See Zoom call-in instructions on the Zoom site. For up-to-date information about scheduled meeting, use the City of Norwalk website. Go to the section that I just went to, which was to look at the calendar, look for the ZDA meeting, get the agenda, and then as you go through the items, then you can get to the information for those items. And we'll be more specific in the future. Let's take a moment to review how the meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours, we're holding a public hearing for each application on tonight's agenda. Applicants and other participants have received notice, and other notices of hearing were printed in the Norwalk hour. After roll call, each application will be announced by the chair and then read into the record by the secretary. The applicant or representative will state his or her name for the record and then present the appeal or code relief sought. Please present those zoning issues relevant to the practical difficulty or the hardship that gave rise to the application. After you or your representative has spoken, those public participants in favor will have a chance to be heard. Following at those public participants against the application will have their opportunity to state their opposition. I'm just going to inject this, but it isn't necessary tonight. In the case of an appeal, at this time, the zoning staffs have the opportunity to present their findings. After those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and to respond to any issues that may have been raised. The chair will either close the hearing or, if appropriate, grant a continuance, which I usually do with the assent of the rest of the board members. The application will be called, next application, and a new application will normally not be heard after nine as the board must discuss and act upon those applications that we went through. No further participation in public input is accepted at that time. However, participants in the public are welcome to stay and observe that portion of tonight's meeting. Should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision tonight. Finally, before we proceed, I must remind you that this meeting, including each hearing, is recorded video conference and will become a matter of public record. All participants and all public commenters must state their name and address. Comments must be on topic. Please note that anyone using threatening, hateful, or sexually explicit language will be cut off, removed, and will not be allowed to rejoin. I don't think we have any other announcements, do we, Tanny? So the first case to be heard is 25041702. I've already identified who's here on the board for that hearing. And if we come up with another hearing, I'll give my place over to Lee. I don't think he's with us yet. So with that, I go to the Secretary Danielle, and she'll read the memorandum from staff.
Mr. Chair, Lee has joined us now, or he's connecting now.
You all set, Danielle?
Sure. Yep. I'll get started. Item 25-0417-02, 38 SPD LLC variances. Front yard setback 30 feet required, 3.6 feet existing/proposed. Building height 32 feet required, 34.18 feet. Total height 40 feet required, 40.18 feet proposed to elevate and alter an existing single-family residence. Relocate and reconstruct an existing detached garage. Principal front setback 50 feet required, 7.9 feet proposed. Secondary front setback 20 feet required, .6 feet proposed. Very parking in the front setback 30 feet required, 7.9 feet proposed, and add a spa 50 feet required, 44 feet proposed per table. 4.3.1-C in CD1S Zone and Coastal Area Management overlay. Property located at 38 South Beach Drive, District 6, Block 36, Lot 64. Request applicants, variances to allow elevating and modifying an existing single-family dwelling, replace a detached garage, and allow parking in the front setback and install a spa. The home was built in 2000, replacing an older home. Variances were granted in 1999 to reduce required setbacks for that 2000 construction. There are older variances for the previous dwelling and existing garages as well. Analysis and findings: This proposal includes elevating the home to make flood compliant. While variances are not precedential, the board has in the past granted variances for properties within the flood zone. The applicant notes additional site constraints and practical difficulties that require variances for the location of the detached garage and spa. Please find the attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates that her activities do require a coastal site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. She also notes that the activities for which the variances are sought are not expected to have adverse impact to coastal resources. This application requires two separate decision motions. One, the variance request, which must include a hardship declaration. And two, the coastal site plan review, which must include a declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with CCMA goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. And then we have the review from Amelia Williams.
So we got a ton of commentary. How do you want to handle that, Danielle?
You mean all of the comments?
Yeah, I don't even know you can summarize them. But we're not going to go through every one in detail. It's just not going to happen. I think you want to get the gist of each of the separate comments that were commentary that were provided.
Sure. Do we want to do that in the public comment section?
Yeah, let's wait. Can you get together by then and be okay to do it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So who do we have representing?
You have me, Mr. Chair.
You ready to rock and roll?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, let's go.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, and I represent the applicants 38 SPD LLC for the property at 38 South Beach Drive. There is also a companion application, which you heard last month as well. And I would just ask that testimony and presentation with respect to 38 South Beach Drive be made part of 46 South Beach Drive and also 46 part of 38, since there are some overlaps and some information that is applicable to one and to the other in an effort to keep this presentation to a minimum. I would ask that you do that, just as you did last month. Present tonight are Michael and Christine Angelakis. They are the principals of 38 SPD LLC, the owner. Also present are Oliver Cope and Olivia Rowan of Oliver Cope Architects, Craig Flaherty of Reddison Need, Kaitlyn Drury of Hollander, and Haley Simpson of Brace. In the event that you have any questions specific to them and their areas of discipline, you will hear from Oliver and Olivia and possibly from Craig and Kaitlyn.
Hold on, hold on one second. While we're joining them, what we're have to do is we have to handle each separately?
Of course.
You know that.
Of course.
Don't combine them as you go, other than maybe some geographical comments. Thanks.
Certainly, Mr. Conroy. That is the directive you gave us last month, and it's absolutely appropriate. As you will recall, we appeared before you on April 17th to present this application for this developed property at 38 South Beach Drive. You continued the hearing to afford us the opportunity to review and respond to comments generated by the zoning board of appeals and also from the public. We have done so, and Oliver and Olivia, along with Craig and Kaitlyn, are available to make presentations to you with respect to some of the changes made and responses to the suggestions, comments, and concerns. We are happy to answer any questions that you have moving forward tonight. Would like to reserve some time at the end to respond to any other public comments and rebuttal. Before you do, though, I would just like to give a very brief summary, not repeat what Commissioner Sancheck just read into the record, a very brief summary of how we got here. As some of you may recall, zoning regulations require that renovations to non-conforming structures in the flood zone that exceed 25% of the appraised value are considered substantial. And if those improvements are substantial, then a dwelling must be elevated to the minimum flood established for that particular property plus two feet. In this case, the flood zone classification is 15 feet. So the structures in that zone must be elevated to 17 feet. It's 15 feet for FEMA plus two feet as required for the Norrock zoning regulations. The change to the regulations requiring FEMA plus two feet has made any house built before the change in 2024 non-conforming and subject to this 25% rule because it used to be FEMA requirement plus one foot. So the proposal is to have some renovations to the house to elevate the dwelling to meet FEMA plus two feet to replace the existing non-conforming garage. And the variances have been identified by Commissioner Sancheck. I would like to call to your attention the fact that one variance, the total height variance, has been eliminated, and Oliver and Olivia will explain to you how that occurred. So there's one less, and that was one that I think was of substantial import to Mr. Conroy and others. We did detail for you the practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships last month, but to reiterate, other variances relate to the requirement that the house be elevated to 15 feet plus two. There are no vertical expansions or new construction that result in the additional height of the structure. There are non-conformities that will either be reduced or eliminated. For example, the replacement garage provides better sightlines from the garage to and from Golden Court. It makes that condition safer, and it increases the setback from zero feet to almost eight feet. There are both VE and AE zones on the property. There is a substantial rock outcrop that prevents moving the house and the garage further into the property. There is also a large tree in the rear of the property that we'd like to maintain. There is minimal construction proposed, and most of it does relate to elevating the house. The retaining walls in the front are to be reconstructed in generally the same location, and they are necessary to hold earth back. A spa is proposed in a natural depression in the rock outcrop. And while there are variances requested for that spa, that particular accessory structure is shielded by both the garage and the dwelling, as we explained to you last month. The city encourages property owners to elevate their structures to make them FEMA compliant. And the goal and policy of FEMA is to do so and not particularly redesign properties, structures, but make them FEMA compliant. As was just explained by Commissioner Sancheck, that was the coastal site plan application. We explained all the component parts and compliance with the Coastal Area Management Act last month, but that has also been confirmed by Amelia Williams' memo to you. Since the board raised several questions as to the public, we've taken the past month to revise and address them. So at this point, I'd like Oliver Cope and Olivia Rowan to explain to you what has happened and what our responses are to some of those comments and questions. Olivia and Oliver?
Yeah. Good evening. So we have some diagrams there. The first thing we want to talk about is how we reduced the height on the building so that we no longer need a variance for the total height. So the existing structure, basically, because we are in both an AE zone and a BE zone, we have to comply with the VE zone regulations. And those regulations state clearly that the base flood elevation of 15 plus two feet gets you to 17, and the bottom of the horizontal, the lowest horizontal structure member has to be at 17. So if you can see my screen, this is the bottom, this is the existing floor structure, and these are the beams that will carry the floor structure once we lift the house. So we discovered that the existing floor structure is actually slightly less than we had anticipated, which is good news. So the steel beams underneath will still stay at 17, but the finished floor and the whole house will be slightly lower, so we meet the 40 feet maximum allowed height. And so we no longer request the total height variance. The midpoint height variance is necessary because we are lifting the house, and we're lifting the house in its form, its current form. So we're lifting, this is the existing house, which we are taking and lifting the whole house up. So this is because of the consequence of following FEMA and Norrock regulations that we will require that midpoint height variance. The other issue that came up last meeting was the garage. And so the, oops, sorry. The proposed garage is pushed back from the corner of South Beach Drive and Golden Court. Currently, it's right on the corner. We have a photo here.
Yeah, I'm seeing the photo. It just needs to get.
All right, yeah, I'm trying to blow it up. It's Zoom.
That's good.
So here you can see the existing garage right on the corner there. And for safety reasons and also for flood reasons, we have decided to take this garage, make it smaller, and push it back from the corner here. Push it back as far as we can because there is a large rock outcrop at the back of the site, and we can't go any further back without blasting into the rock. We've also brought it up to code because this garage is in the AE zone and will require flood vents. And then above it, we are proposing to keep all the mechanical equipment, which now because of the FEMA code is required to be at elevation 17. So let me see. We have a drawing here. So this is the new proposed garage. We have mechanical equipment hidden within the roof structure so that we don't have to build a platform that would be up at this 17 elevation required by Norrock and FEMA's code. So here's the mechanical equipment hidden inside this space and with the clearances required. So that was in response to some questions about the garage size. Also, this small deck that is access to the garage, we have now changed it so that it's slatted deck and will be pervious. So we are decreasing the impervious square footage on the site.
When you say the garage is smaller, would you be more specific, please? Link with height?
It's smaller in area, not in height. The height is, matches what is allowed for an accessory structure of 20 feet to the peak and 14 and a half to the halfway up the roof. But.
So the mechanical is six feet height?
Yeah, well, the roof is pitched, and it's pitched in two directions. So it's quite a small space up there, but it's enough to fit the mechanical.
Okay.
Equipment. We've also reduced the size of this large garage door here on the street and pushed it back.
So your setback was, last time around, I think, eight feet? Is that still what it is?
Well, it's still what it is because of the rock outcrop at the back of this property.
I just am trying to refresh my memory.
Yes, it's the same. We're asking the same. Yes.
Would you like to just address the suggestion by Commissioner Sancheck about secondary garage in the front?
Yes.
While getting an elevation for you, one of the issues that emerged when we considered that suggestion is that would have required another variance since there would have been a wider driveway mouth within a certain distance into the property that would not have been, we would not have been able to accommodate the width of the driveway for a side-by-side garage without getting another variance.
Yes, that's correct. We did look at putting a second car under the house in this location, but that would have meant widening this curb cut to about 24 feet and per your zoning code, 10 feet is the maximum allowed for a driveway. Would also, would have meant relocating this stair. We also looked at putting two cars, one behind each other underneath the building, but because of the flood and the water regulations, and we had Race Coastal Engineering confirm this, we can't build a retaining wall back that far. And right now, there's a change in grade right here at this line.
One other thing to consider, Mr. Chairman, is if a driveway exceeds 20 feet, then it doesn't comply with the public works requirements.
I must not comply. If I took the distance from the leftmost wall in the diagram to the rightmost wall excluding the garage, how close is that to the current distance, leftmost to rightmost?
So you're asking from this wall to this wall?
Yep. Well, kind of. Yeah, you're almost on it. But leftmost to rightmost excluding the garage. I'm trying to figure out if you're within the foundation of the dimensions of the foundation that exist.
Yes, well, the existing garage runs across here and back to here. If you can see my arrow. So we needed a location for mechanical room on the house. So we have reduced the size of the current garage, but the square footage is actually less than, for the building, square footage is less than what is there currently.
So how much wider are you then? What is there now?
Well, currently, the existing garage goes the whole way to the corner here.
Yeah, I don't want to include the garage. I just want the main structure.
The house?
The house.
The house goes to this corner right here, so probably about 670.
Because one of the things that I find problematic when down in that area in particular is when the house grows in width and height. You solved the height. I don't think we've solved the width, but please proceed.
I'd like to interject just for a second. One of the consequences of the FEMA regulations are that we have to, as Olivia touched on before, we have to elevate mechanical equipment above the base flood elevation plus the freeboard. And as a consequence, we can't use a lower level to put some of the normal household equipment, boilers, air handlers, things like that.
Yeah. By the way, we've been through this a bazillion times.
Okay.
We're familiar.
Just so you understand, the trade we're making here was to reduce the garage footprint and push it back and borrow some of the savings in area and add this narrow mechanical room on the west side of the house.
All right. So give me an exact number of how much additional footage you, not square footage, just length across the front. That if you go in from the leftmost wall to the rightmost wall, eight feet, 10 feet, 20 feet, I don't know. Then I'll make a judgment on how much that really came from the old garage.
Oliver, I come up with seven, just scaling the prints.
Yeah, it's about seven. That's what I said. Between six and eight, about 70.
Yeah, if you look at our garage door, which is nine feet, and compare that width to the, to the width of the mechanical space.
All right. So we have a widening of seven feet to help accommodate your mechanical equipment's placement.
Right.
Go ahead. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Well, I think I covered everything. Did we have other questions?
About the board, you got any?
May I just ask for clarification from Oliver and Olivia? Putting aside the setback for the secondary structure and the secondary frontage from Golden Court, isn't the side setback from Golden Court to the main dwelling compliant? We're not seeking a variance of the side setback, even with the slight addition to accommodate elevating the house?
That's correct, based on the site plan. And then.
You got your architect with you? Is that Craig?
Yeah, Craig Flaherty. I'm the site civil engineer. So I was looking at the site plan, and the addition is not over the side yard.
I don't want to make your argument for you, but by reducing the width of the garage and increasing the width of the house, overall, between the end of the garage and the end of the house, you kept it the same, correct?
Slightly.
We actually pulled in the garage six inches from Golden Court. So we've actually reduced it by six inches.
And the width, the new width of the garage compared to the old width of the garage.
Are you about as wide as it was so that the mass looks relatively the same? Except for the height, because going up, or whatever you're going up.
Is my audio on?
Yes.
Yes.
And so if I could ask Olivia or Oliver, the existing width of the garage to the proposed width of the garage, how much smaller does the garage get?
Well, the existing garage went the whole way almost to the corner of the house.
Yes, it's about 26 feet wide, I think.
Like, yes, it was like an L-shaped. Yeah.
The plan, or the page with the two elevations, the proposed and the existing, might be helpful to reference here.
One of the other things is that we brought the eaves in because the eaves actually overhung Golden Court.
That's good. Yeah. Don't shrink it anymore. Yeah, that was my recollection, is that if you took the frontage all the way across, that it was similar, but there's huge changes within it. And then the real mass change is the height increase. All right, I'm okay.
Right. The height increase, obviously, is nothing we can do because we have to lift the house, and we're not adjusting the house. We're lifting the house.
Do you guys know how to frame your hardship?
Is the existing garage going to be demolished? Or are you going to try to lift portions of it to accomplish what you?
Well, the garage, the garage does not have to be lifted. It's in an AE zone, and we can.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, now I I you're right about that. So the garage so you're demolishing part of the garage to accomplish the narrowing of it.
We are, we we're going to save the.
They're doing more than that, Lee, because they got to move it back about eight.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, tha- that's kind of what I was implying. Essentially, the structure is going to be dismantled and reconstructed.
Correct, to make it less um to make it less non-conforming, to make it more conform.
Yeah, I I back to the hardship, you guys know how to propose that. Remember, for the attorneys with us, there've been some court cases that have made it more difficult than ever. So I would think we'd want to talk about a potential because catastrophic loss of great value if the building isn't able to withstand a storm, and an item that I added that I don't think has made it into any court case, if you read the statute, we also have to take in safety considerations. When you have large storms and parts of the house or the whole house floats away and starts becoming a battering ram to the neighbors, it's a safety concern and getting the structure to withstand the storm is a safety increase.
Chairman Conrad, I think that's exactly what FEMA is is expecting in connection with properties that have some substantial improvements. The whole purpose is when you, when the.
Our courts haven't, so I'm adding it in.
I I it's an important and it's it's essential. Even FEMA has specified that when buildings undergo improvement, it's an opportunity for a local floodplain management program to reduce flood damage to existing structures. That's of their own damage desk reference. And the whole concept of this this elevating structures to meet FEMA compliance, plus Norwalk's additional two feet, is to protect a property owner's investment in safety over time and reduce the total number of buildings that are exposed to flood damage, thus reducing the burden on taxpayers through payment of disaster assistance. That's exactly why one has to elevate a house, so that.
I just want you to add that to um
Certainly.
Your requirement for the variances. Thanks.
Does anyone have any other questions for me or Olivia or Oliver or Craig Flaherty? I'm sorry. Mr. and Mrs. Angelakis are present too, if you have any questions of them, or I don't know if Michael and Christine, you'd like to share anything.
So, if we're clear of questions, then we'll we'll be looking for raised hands of public participants or any that may be now on with us on Zoom.
And if we do have a call, yeah, sorry, we do have a call in, so if you've called in and you wish to speak, you have to press star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute.
And yeah, those that are in support, I want to hear them first.
So far, no raised hands.
None?
None.
There were several letters of support that I'm sure you've read, and I would imagine you would make the permanent record. Thank you.
Danielle, take a look at what we have and see what you want to summarize.
Sure. Um, I'll just, it seems, and Tammy, let me know if I missed one, but it seems like all the letters that we received that were passed through are letters of support. Um, and I'll I'll read through the names of the the people that wrote in. Um, so we have a letter of support from Douglas Brody. Um, we have a letter from Lori Pasqualini. Uh, she was also clarifying that her initial question, I believe at last month's meeting, um, was not against the proposals, but curious as we discussed, the amount of construction that's happening within a very small area of Belle Island, um, and was wondering if planning and zoning ever takes into account um the amount of construction happening in one area. Um, there's a letter of support for from Chuck and Melanie Berman. A letter of support from Lizanne Galberith. A letter of support from Buell and Teresa Duncan. A letter of support from Stuart A. Levinson. A letter of support from Christina Lake. Um, a letter of support from Joe Topper Jr., and I think that's the last one I have.
Unless somebody thinks there's one that we've missed, we'll move on to raising hands for those that are not in support. And we'll hear them now, including anybody that may be on Zoom with us.
No raised hands.
None?
None.
Something's not right here, because I know that.
Well, they probably want to comment on forty-six, I'm guessing.
Yeah, maybe they were confused on how to make the comment, uh, because Raz was sent us a note last time around, and I don't think that they've withdrawn that note.
No, no, but that was specific to forty-six.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the forty-six comments document that Tammy sent through.
All right. So there are no other people from the public wishing to speak one way or the other. With that, I think um there's not a whole lot to rebut. Liz, do you want to go on or do you want to talk?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, since there are no comments in opposition, there is no need to rebut. I would just ask that you consider all of the testimony by the experts tonight and last hearing, and also evaluate this application based upon the difficulties and unnecessary hardships we explained last night and reiterated tonight. Uh, nothing to rebut, there's no reason for us to to take any more of your time on this application. One thing I just want to add that the the individuals who sent letters of support, Mr. Brody is a neighbor at thirty South Beach, the Dunkins are neighbors at on Golden Court. Miss Dr. Levinson was the prior owner of the property. Christina Lake and is a a prop an abutting property owner on Rocky Point Road. And Mr. Topper is also a neighbor on Golden Court, I believe. I thought there was also one other letter from early on from goodness, one other individual, but maybe it didn't make it into the file. That was all I had to add, Mr. Conrad.
There was a loose hand in there in the mix.
We originally had that Doug Brody was the first one we had at the first meeting.
Okay.
I thought there was a letter from Lynn Gaylord as well on Golden Court.
Could that have been for forty-six only?
I suspect it would have been for thirty-eight, but that's okay.
Right, um. Let me know when I can proceed and I shall.
I have one question, Liz. Do you recall, do you recall how many variances uh there were um, last month, and how many of those have, and how many there are this month? In other words, how many things have been um baited or removed?
Sure, Commissioner Lyon, we had sought last month, uh, one, two, three, four. I believe there were eight, including the the front setback, the for the main structure, the setbacks for the accessory structure, um, the spa, the retaining walls, and then also I think those are it, and one has been removed since this structure now complies with a forty-feet maximum height.
Liz, would it be fair to say that some of the variances that we require, we we have to, we have to ask for the variances because we're elevating, but in some cases, we're reducing the nonconformity, but we still require a variance.
Exactly. That relates to the garage and to other component parts.
I think that's what I was sort of getting towards. It it seems to me that there has been fair amount of concessions or trading or whatever the appropriate term is.
For example, the the front yard variance, it's exactly the same as exists today, but since there's a slight addition on the front, we requested the variance, but it's no closer to the front property line than the existing. Um, parking in the front setback, right now it's at zero since the garage is right at the property line and that's being improved to seven point nine feet, so while it needs a variance, it certainly is an improvement and a reduction in the noncon- nonconformity. The same is true for the structure of the garage as it faces Golden Court. Right now, there's no setback and it's being improved a little bit, a half a foot, but nonetheless, it's more than what exists today. And those are, if that answers your question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tammy, when we get around to making motions later, I want to enumerate the variances, and I don't see in anything I have that that's easy to do right now. I mean, yes, I have a pretty good idea of what they are, but I still want to officially enumerate them while we're in that process of discussion later. So just, you know. Okay, so with that in mind, we have gotten to the point where we can uh swap horses. And we're not going to make a decision on this now, so we can go to thirty-eight through forty-six, rather.
Forty-six.
Yep, I'm pulling it up. Okay. So this is twenty-five dash zero four one seven dash zero three.
Mm-hmm.
Plant Court LLC, um, continued from the April seventeenth uh, ZBA meeting. Variances, front yard, thirty feet required, eighteen point four existing, fifteen point seven proposed. Building height, thirty-two required, twenty-nine point four feet existing, thirty-seven point one feet proposed. Total building height, forty feet required, thirty-seven point four feet existing, and forty-four point three feet proposed to elevate and alter an existing single-family residence. Very parking in the front setback, thirty feet required, eighteen point four feet existing, and fifteen point seven feet proposed. Install replacement pool. Rear yard required fifty feet from front property line, existing forty-eight feet slash proposed thirty-seven point three feet. Replace retaining wall section, five feet from property line required, zero feet existing and proposed. Um, per table four point three point one dash C, and vary twenty-five feet from mean high tide buffer, twenty-five feet required, zero feet existing and proposed per six point nine point five point D point one. And allow proposed deck to encroach into the front yard, deck not permitted in the front yard per table four point three point ten. Encroachments in CD dash one S zone and coastal area management overlay, property located at forty-six South Beach Drive, District Six, Block Thirty-Six, Lot Sixty-three. Request applicant seeks variance to allow elevating and modifying an existing single-family dwelling, replace a pool, replace a retaining wall, allow parking in the front setback, and vary coastal buffer. The home was built in twenty thirteen, previous variances were granted for the property. Analysis and findings. This proposal includes elevating the home to make flood compliant. While variances are not presidential, the board has in the past granted variances for the properties within the flood zone. The applicant notes additional site constraints and practical difficulties that require variances for the location of the replacement pool, retaining wall, parking, and coastal buffer. Revised, although the deck is not an accessory structure, it is attached to the primary building. Table four point three point ten encroachments indicate decks are not permitted in the front yard. It will be necessary to grant an additional variance of the encroachment table to allow the deck in its proposed location. Please find attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates the activities do require a coastal site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. She also notes the activities for which the variances are sa- are not expected to have adverse impacts to coastal resources. This application requires two separate decision motions. One, the variance request, which must include a hardship declaration. And two, the coastal site plan review, which must include the declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with CCMA goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. Attachment one coastal site plan memo from Amelia Williams, land use planner. Um, and then we have the memo from Amelia Williams.
All set?
Yep.
Go ahead and give us your updated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record again, I'm Liz Suchi of Carmody, Torrent Sandec, and Hennessy. I represent the owner of the property, Plant Court LLC. Present tonight are Christine and Michael Angelakis. They are principals in Plant Court LLC. Also present are Craig Flaherty, Oliver Cope, Olivia Rowan, Caitlin Jury, and Haley Simpson. You may hear from some or all of them in connection with tonight's proposal. We did present this application to you on April seventeenth, and like the application at thirty-eight South Beach Drive, the the requested variances derive from the necessity to elevate the structure to meet the minimum flood elevation of fifteen feet established by FEMA plus two feet. Since the proposed renovations to the dwelling exceed the twenty-five percent appraised value, we are then in the land of we need to elevate the structure in order to make it FEMA compliant. Uh, one of the benefits of this proposal is, uh, in addition to making the structure FEMA compliant to current standards, we also plan to remove the nonconforming site front structure, which occupies a nice portion of the corner, the, I guess it would be the the south, south, the northwest corner, southwest corner of the property. Uh, perhaps, um, Olivia, you could call up the site plan. So as I won't reiterate what Commissioner Sancheck just identified as the variance is necessary, but to reiterate the practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships that we shared with you last month, this is a substantially irregularly shaped lot. It's one of the more unusual ones that you'll see. Um, the variances relate to the requirement that the house be elevated to fifteen feet plus two. There's no vertical expansion or new construction that results in that height. Nonconformities to be eliminated include the removal of that site front structure. The property has both VE and AE zones on the property. There is a large vegetated area on the eastern side. Uh, the twenty-five-foot CAM coastal setback, we had hoped by now would be adjusted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was supposed to be taken up at public hearing last month, last week, but the hearing ran long and the commission did not get to that portion of their agenda. It's anticipated that it will be on their agenda on May twenty-first. And if that happens, then the variance, if you deem it appropriate to grant it, would likely become moot at that time. There's minimal new construction resulting from the elevation of the house. The retaining walls are necessary to hold back the earth from moving into South Beach Drive. And as we had mentioned before, uh, last month, both cupolas are proposed to be removed, thereby reducing the the period massing of the building. The pool is completely out of the VE zone, and as is, uh, as we specified with the application for thirty-eight South Beach Drive, the city encourages property owners to elevate FEMA noncompliant structures. That's a very important aspect of this application. And the policy and goals, goal of FEMA and the flood hazard zone of the regulations is to make structures compliant to protect safety and to protect individuals and property from storm events. Coastal site plan, as was indicated, was submitted. It meets the requirements of the CAM Act, Section twenty-two A ninety-two, and that's been confirmed by Ms. Williams. At this point, um, I'd like, uh, either Olivia or Oliver to discuss the questions and comments that you and the public raised on April seventeenth. And we will reserve time at the end for rebuttal or any further comments. That concludes my presentation right now, but if you have any questions or comments from me, I'd be happy to answer them. So Olivia or Oliver?
Yeah, hi.
Give us the two frontal views of the existing and the proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah, shrink it just a tad. Very good. I'm always wondering about massing.
Well, again, as Liz said, we're lifting this house without changing the massing for most of the house. We're lifting it per FEMA code. And then so that these uh garages aren't just dangling there with a big blank wall, we extended the roof line on down to incorporate the new garage. Because if you lifted this house without doing that, you you just. Because if you lifted this house without doing that, you you just have a very tall wall. And we think it's a lot more pleasing to the street and to the neighbors to do so. Um. We've also, as Liz said, removed the two kuplas that, um, are currently on the house just to reduce the massing and scale the house.
And on the new, I guess the news at the top. Um, and you have a chimney structure that is gigantic, uh, why is that?
Um, well, the chimney is. There is, there's actually a current chimney here, but it's not masonry and it just vents out the side of the of the chimney outside of the wall. So we wanted to put a masonry chimney, it's not in the setback, it doesn't, um, add to the coverage because we're totally under the covered, the maximum coverage. And the only reason we have a walkway through it is because of this. Uh, outcropping of rock that is here on this east side.
How far is that, eight feet, ten feet, the rock?
The rock, the rock goes up about, uh, Caitlin could tell me about. Eight, ten.
Uh, elevation twenty one.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, almost eighteen, fifteen feet, yeah.
Think the street.
Yeah, in the upper, um, if you come to the middle and go left slightly.
Well, one more.
I think there's a roof, a roof that just didn't get colored in, is that right?
Um, oh, yes, you're right, this roof should be shaded in, it's exactly the same roof as here, we just.
That's what I thought, okay.
Just one more point on the chimney, it's setback, uh, sixty eight feet from the road.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, it's way back, it's not in any setback.
So the biggest problem is. I don't know if it's the biggest, the height was the biggest, we've under forty all the way through?
Um, so the height is, I think we ended up at forty four. Because it is a consequence of having to lift this house to FEMA flood, um, regulations. Again, we have the shaded areas, the existing house, we're literally just lifting up the existing house. Here is the existing floor, the steel underneath the existing floor to hold it. We're putting in, um, pilings and piers to hold this house. And once we lifted, the, we we get up to forty four point three. But again, we're removing this kupla.
I'm glad you're removing the kupla, but I'm a little unhappy with the height. Um. And the pool is a major problem for us. Because if you were reducing a nonconformity. I could handle that. And we kind of have a number in our own minds as to what that would be, so twenty feet. If we can't reduce a nonconformity, then we don't have a rationale for approving it.
Well, one of the issues with the pool and Craig Flaherty, you can correct me, is the, we. Located the pool where it is in order for it to comply with the FEMA requirements for the zone. It's out of the VE zone. And that's important on a property that is that's adjacent to the water. Not to mention that front, um, shed, it's it's more than a shed, is coming out in its entirety. So that existing nonconforming structure that occupies that corner of the property, it's, um, on the left circle, that's going to be removed in its entirety.
Oh, that's good.
And and I'd like to, it's the.
But the forty four still bothers me and the pool bothers me. Because there was, um, patio that kind of got in the way of pushing the pool back closer to the house and away from the beach. And I'm just not sure that that'll fly unless we get a change in the zone, which is something you might want to put off. Hoping that you're going to get that change. Because I don't have a rationale for it. And I know you're saying FEMA compliant, that's still not a rationale.
Oh, but, well, just let me be a little more clear about why we want to be in the AE zone. If we're, if we're in the VE zone, the same, um, requirement from the FEMA is that the bottom of the lowest. Horizontal structural member has to be FEMA plus two feet of freeboard. That's not the case in the AE zone where it's simply the finished floor level. If we kept the existing location, which is not compliant, there's no evidence that it was built to resist flotation. Or anything like that, if if we lift it in that location, it actually goes higher to comply with FEMA. So the the hardship, that's a hardship in and of itself, we're pushing it landward. So that we can be entirely in the AE zone with that structure, which makes it viable and also keeps it significantly lower. Than it would be if you were to, if you were to comply with the VE zone requirements. Then the square footage of the surrounding deck, which is permeable, pervious.
No.
Um, is where it goes past the setback is substantially less. Than the square footage of the shed, which is even further into the front yard setback. So we think this is a pretty good effort at mitigating the impact of the pool.
Um, so what's the distance now? Presently?
To the pool or?
Fifteen?
To, to which?
The edge of the pool from the high water line.
To the camp, you mean to the CAM line that they proposed?
Um.
Yeah.
I see the blue, I see the blue structure in here. But I thought the pool was in front of that and more toward the water.
The existing pool is is here, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then where are you going to put it?
We're putting it where the blue line is.
That's what I thought.
And we're behind the A, the VE line.
It's getting, it's getting farther away from the water. By a, by a fair amount. But it, and it's also, Craig, you can comment better than I can, but in terms of, um, the issues that we talked about with thirty eight. And debris, the debris loading and the hazard to the community. Leaving the existing pool would be, um, much less desirable than building a new. Elevated pool, which allows actually floodwater to go underneath it. I mean, you could literally.
Let's just get the damn distance right.
Okay.
So from.
You're asking from mean high water?
No, how, from the high water level to the nearest edge of the pool currently.
Oh, just give me a minute and I'll get those numbers for you. We're twenty three feet, three inches from the nearest corner of the pool to mean high water existing.
Okay, and the new?
Uh, thirty seven feet, eight inches.
From high water to the edge of the pool?
Correct. Pool is moving away.
Why do we have, why do we have a problem?
The, so for accessory structures. Uh, although this complies completely with the front yard setback. The new regulations say accessory structures have to be front yard setback plus twenty feet. Away from the street. So on this diagram, the first, the thirty foot front yard setback is the dashed gray line, maybe someone could highlight that for me.
Yeah.
So that's compliant front yard setback for principal structures. But there's an additional twenty feet that is added for accessory structures, that's the green line. So.
In terms of the distance from the beach area, the high water line.
Yeah.
To the pool is thirty seven, eight.
Correct, we are moving it away from the water.
Around the pool, the pool itself, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I still don't see the problem other than possibly looking at the other direction. Um, and I think we can just think about that one a little more. But I don't think that the twenty five foot requirement in from the high water line is a problem.
It it is not for the pool, no.
Okay, good, thanks.
Right, I think the deck in the front setback is still. Is is a new variance from what we talked about last time. Um, and I think, you know, you, while you're eliminating the shed, you could still have a very reasonable deck and respect that thirty foot setback. Around the pool, in the pool in its current location, that is an improvement from the current pool location.
We have the, uh, photo from Beach Drive of the shed structure that's going to be, uh, removed, how the, how the street feels today.
I know there were rocks in the way, which caused you to move the structure over to the side a little bit, but was it a big boulder next to the pool?
I guess maybe the lower photo, uh, is a little easier to see, you know, that that is, oh, there we go, that's great, right? So that the shed structure to the left of the garage, right there, right behind the mailbox. That is being completely removed, so in terms of the experience of, uh, massing on the street. Uh, it's a significant improvement, now we have a planter. Additionally, in front of, uh, of the deck to help screen it.
That is. Remind me what the structure is, is that the garage?
It's a shed with pool equipment in it currently, but we're going to take that whole thing out.
And nothing will return in its place.
Right, and the pool deck is a lot further back than this structure, so from the street, it's not even visible.
It'll be less structure in the front yard. And it will be, uh, twenty feet back instead of zero feet back.
Right.
Okay, so to do the lingo right, that's a reduction of a nonconformity.
One is eliminated entirely.
Oh, it's a reduction, it sounds good.
I'm, I'm, I, I think we could go with reduction.
I think the issue still remains, though, um, Mr. Chairman, that. Absent a substantial, uh, reconstruction to this house. Uh, the forty four foot height is something that we can't do anything about, unlike what we, what was discovered with thirty eight South Beach. The the structure just exists in a configuration that elevating it. Forces the forty four foot height, that's why the two kuplas were coming off, because that would make it look a little less, um, the massing would be a little less. Um, but absent a, a, a total reconstruction, which is really a, an unnecessary hardship. Uh, that's why we're being, like, height variance. Just function of making this structure conformed FEMA.
Yeah, I'll have to see what the other members of the board think. I mean, I'm pretty strict about the forty foot rule.
Al- although other locations don't, aren't, um. Determinative for you, they do shed light on what has been done in the neighborhood, for example, on Rocky Point Road. There was a height variance for that structure, it predated the current regulations. But that structure, I believe, the height variance was instead of forty, it was forty three and change. And as you're all very aware, there have been numerous applications for height variances in this neighborhood and the surrounding area of Roate Island. To achieve FEMA compliance, and almost all of them are, have been granted, with the exception of those for which additions on the upper floor are sought. And you've been very clear, this commission has been very clear, that it would prefer not to see and it would not look favorably upon. Um, for example, taking a a half story and making it a full story, or taking a two story structure and trying to then put on a full third story. But there have been height variances, there have been story variances for the simple fact that the the structures. Um, are unable to be raised to to whatever the minimum FEMA is without then. Conflicting, um, or coming up against the challenge of then complying with the height requirement or the story requirement.
Well, you know, we have actually been insisting on the forty foot or thirty eight foot rule for. Very long time, and it has to be a really special reason to go over it. Um, I understand the current structure and I understand the roof type. And I understand what you're doing, I just think you need to put a little more thought into it and figure out how not to go up that high. The massing of structures along the coastal front. Um, needs to be constrained as much as possible. So that we can justify popping them up about a floor and some. So that they're very tall now. Um, besides that, great benefit to the homeowner and to the neighborhood. Um, we don't want to, uh, allow massing, great massing beyond the parameters of staying within the footprint and staying under the max height. Is there any thought from the architect, any way they're going to attack this item?
I. I, I think what you're, what you are, um. Suggesting is a tremendous practical difficulty. I mean, there, it would mean reframing the entire, um, porch, the entire roof. Um, and. And there's, there's, there is living space at that level currently, so you're also impacting on the, this sort of viability of the, of the house itself. This is all a consequence of the Norwalk zoning change. This is, there's nothing else pushing this up in the air, except that they have the most restrictive. Code on the Connecticut coast, there are twenty three communities, I believe, subject to the FEMA flood. Uh, zones, and all of them respect the FEMA guidelines of fifty percent. Of the value and.
There are so many, so many requirements that.
Okay.
We need not go through them all.
Okay, but this is.
We want to avoid great massing along the coastline.
To, to that point.
We're granting something you don't have the right to. And we're justifying it by saying, um, there's a great loss if you're impacted by the storm. And there's also the damage that can be to the community from the storm by not raising it.
To, to the point.
Past the court decision that kind of tells us that we can't do this, well, I'm saying we can. And that there's two elements to it, your loss, the homeowner's loss, rather. And the safety concerns for the immediate community. But at the same time, that we do that, which allows us to lay, uh, raise all the ones that are right near the water. You get the benefit of, uh, being able to get the flood insurance, you get the benefit of, uh, having restored part of the home. To, um, a new level of construction and, um. Yeah, it's a difficulty to stay within the bounds that we have, but I want you to think about it more.
To, to the point, uh, particularly related to massing along the shorefront, one thing. That is true for forty six. Uh, South Beach, which is, um, not necessarily true for many of the, uh, houses in this area. Is that we are not maxing out building coverage. Uh, so the building coverage allowed is fifty one hundred square feet and we're closer to forty four hundred square feet. So we, we have massing that would otherwise be allowed, that we are not taking advantage of.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Um, and to your, I've been looking into your comment about the chimneys, I think the way the chimney is drafted. Um, considerably exceeds what the code requirement is. And I think as long as we bring it down to the point where it's no more than three feet above the ridge. Um, we could, we could minimize that. Um, it's a, it's a small thing, but between that and the, and the two kuplas coming off.
At a two list. Um, I think we need to go through everybody else having questions and comments. Um, and when we get done with that and Liz comes back and we talk to Liz. Um, then we can talk how about we're going to proceed. So how about board, you got questions?
Really don't have any questions, I mean, it's been pretty well laid out for us.
Mm hmm.
They asked a lot of questions, I've personally. They asked a lot of questions. I've personally viewed the video of the last, last month's hearing twice to really delve into the issues, and I, I think they're very complex. Uh, I don't think that uh, uh, the design team on these two projects has had an easy time. And uh, they've come to us with some solutions, and some of them we don't like. And I think that's part of our discussion after the hearing closes.
It is. Any questions from the other three board members? That are sitting, four board members, actually. Lee's on the next one.
I have no questions.
Um, Danielle?
No, I'm just wondering if the, you know, the deck around the pool wasn't considered to be smaller to respect the front setback instead of asking for that variance as well.
Mr. Architect, talk directly to Danielle.
Sorry, I, I, are you asking me for Olivia or myself to address that?
Yeah, and whether it's Craig or you or Olivia.
Um, again, I think that from our point of view, we've done our best to, when we're asking for something, give something back. And we've tried to take that approach from beginning to end on both houses. Um, this is a case where we're trying to create some comfortable space, and what we're asking for in terms of square footage, I think is uh only about two-thirds of what's being eliminated at the shed. Um, and that's just floor area or, or, or surface area, but it uh, it's less in, in terms of its mass and bulk as well, so.
Sure. I mean, I think my perspective is you could get comfortable space and eliminate that variance entirely.
Um, I could, we could have the landscape architects who worked hard on this uh and the back and forth, we could ask them to address it, um, probably more eloquently than I am.
Okay, um, if there are no other questions from the board, we can go to the public. And see if there's then anybody with us that wants to speak in favor. And if they're not with us, do they raise their hands?
Okay, so, um, no raised hands, I just want to remind the caller, if you want to speak in favor, you press star nine. No raised hands. Oh, wait, sorry, we've got, um, this is David Pontius, Pontius?
Yes, hi. I'm uh, I'm David Pontius, I live at forty-five South Beach, I'm just right across the street. Um, I, I, I think I'm in support of all their variances, you know, we understand down here, raising your house is an issue around flood concerns. Um, I had one question about how um high the pool would be raised from its existing level, I understand it's going up for other flood reasons. Um, just curious, and I think, you know, there have been some concerns about some of us neighbors who have water views between the properties. Um, I don't think it's related to the building variances, I think it's more landscaping. Um, however, the Angelakis have been extremely gracious neighbors, they've reached out to discuss their plans with us, they've committed to keeping the existing neighborhood experience as close to what is possible, and, and um, and I think they'll honor that commitment.
Hi, this is Michael Angelakis, if you'd like me to say something, thanks, David. I, I think one of the board members mentioned how complex this project is, and it is very complex, and the regulations have changed a couple times as we've tried to work through this. Um, we've tried to be, or we've tried to create as gracious structures as we possibly can in keeping with the sort of view and sentiment of the neighborhood, and we've worked with some of the neighbors who have those views to even alter the landscaping that was presented last time, to preserve those views for those folks. Um, so we're, you know, very excited about Rowayton, we think it's a wonderful community, we've tried to to deal with all the different regulations, removing the cupola, removing the shed, um, removing trees, uh, trying to deal with some setbacks that make it a little bit easier, so um, we'd appreciate your support, and thank you, David.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? How about folks raising their hands that uh were, Christine, do you want to say something?
Well, I just was wondering if maybe Caitlin from Hollander could comment on the deck, because part of the deck is, is really sort of just being able to physically get around the pool. Um, there's not really that much space uh in terms of I don't know, I, I, I'll let Caitlin speak, uh, she'll do a better job.
Sure, I'd be happy to, I'm Caitlin Drury from Hollander Design.
Yeah, you're, you're a little soft and a little hard to hear.
Is this better now?
A little bit.
So, uh, just for the record, Caitlin Drury with Hollander Design, we're the project landscape architects. Um, if I can share my screen, I'll show the, the rendered plan, which might be helpful to reference. Can everybody see that on my screen now?
We can.
Great. So what we're, we're talking about is this um wood deck surrounding the pool. It is a pervious surface as opposed to the existing stone terrace around the pool, so we're working within the regulations to find a solution that meets the new condition of the property, and that means that this deck and this existing covered porch are at the same level as each other. So you have a new stair coming up to that level from the front yard, and an existing stair down to the drive that's being reconstructed due to some of the changes with the access into the garage. Um, so that circulation from the front is, is to get up to the level of the existing covered porch and relate to that living space. Um, in terms of circulation, we are talking about essentially this half-moon shape, part of which is planter, ideally so that it's softer and more of a coastal garden, um, which I think is a goal for certainly our team and for the homeowners. Um, but this area here is really about having a little bit of space for furniture and room to walk around. That's how we uh ended up with a curved, softer shape and to allow for that literal walking around room uh on all four sides of the pool.
And we have agreed to move the two center trees so that it doesn't impact views for the neighbors that currently have.
This is an older landscape plan, Caitlin.
Correct, this is an older plan with rendering, with the colored rendering added, but in recent discussions, we have agreed to eliminate the center two trees. Uh, to, and to place these trees at the appropriate time in the construction process with the neighbors, we'll of course be on site, we'll be choosing the trees and tagging them, it's a, it's a process that we take very seriously, so um, we're, we're very much on board for that process.
Uh, can Caitlin, can I ask you, because this is, this is your effort and your work, and I, I don't I would, I'd like to know whether you think we could soften this curve further. Um, it looks to me like there's some headroom on the chaises, and there's a reasonable amount of circulation, so is it, is it, to your mind, would it be a reasonable thing for us to do? Um, given all the other challenges, um, to, to, to draw that a little bit to the south?
Um, you're talking about this portion here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we can look at that, I think, and as we develop what these uh, details for this deck really look like, and of course, how it relates to the architecture, we could certainly look at that. Um, you know, we do want to maintain a certain comfortable walking distance and, and choose the furniture carefully with the team, but absolutely, we can look at that, um, the exact shape of that curve.
Mr. Chair, would that be something that the, um, that you and your members, and I, of course, they haven't all spoken yet, would be um, a sufficient mitigation or compromise?
Yeah, all mitigating factors help. I mean, basically, we have to be able to uh explain why we do something. And in this case, there would be reductions of non-conformity. Um, there would be a movement of the pool outside of the distance that is no longer allowed, although that could change in the future. Um, there is really um, no real heavy massing of the building as you raise it. Um, the problem is only that the design of the building has a high peak roof, and that pushes you up to forty-four feet instead of forty. But there's a lot of other things that uh lean toward approval.
Well, I think that the, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Angelakis would certainly be willing to, um, uh, I don't know how you, you best phrase it, but accept a condition that the arc could either be softened or that that uh deck could be made to be more conforming than as it's shown right now. Um, and perhaps that could be something we work with staff, but if it's less than what's requested, then I suspect that's within the power to grant that kind of uh, modified relief.
That'd be wonderful.
So something, something along the line of perhaps three feet, uh, that would reduce the variance request for the deck. Um, and that would also then, um, I think address some of the concerns that you have raised.
How do you want to handle it? Do you want to just make the commitments tonight, or do you want to hold over another month?
No, we're happy to make these commitments tonight. We want to work with the neighbors and folks and yourself to make sure that everyone's happy.
Okay. Um, let's hear from the public who, who I hope has been listening in. Uh, see if there's any folks out there that wanted to uh say they're against the applications.
Yep, we have some raised hands, and we also had some additional letters specifically about forty-six.
Yeah. Um, is that you or Danielle is going to handle the letters?
I can do the letters. You want to do those first?
You go first.
Okay, um, so I'll do letters of support first. Um, similar to, uh, what was it, thirty? Thirty-eight? Yep, we have, um, Douglas Brody in a letter of support. Um, Lori Pasqualini in a letter of support. Um, we have a letter, oh, hold on, too fast. Um, Lizanne Galbraith at Five Cliff Place in a letter of support. Uh, Chuck and Melanie Berman in a letter of support. Burell and Teresa Duncan in a letter of support. Um, Joe Tapper Jr. in a letter of support.
We had one more, it was Christina Lake, support.
Oh, did I miss it?
I think I may have misforwarded it.
Got it, okay. Um, and then, do we want to do raised hands in opposition first or letters?
Yeah, may I just interject that all of our immediately neighbors in that neighborhood are, are some of those people. So, because you didn't give all the addresses, I just want to make sure you understand those are neighbors directly surrounding us. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, is that it for letters of support, or, because there are quite a few, actually? Any others? Are we ready to move on to folks that are in opposition?
I think that was all I had, unless I missed one, Tammy.
I saw a bunch that I, I looked at this afternoon.
Now, that was it for the support, we did have uh two or three for opposition.
Yeah, there were, I think I have two, Tammy, so.
Yeah, were they extremely lengthy? I thought I had three, and I thought they were all lengthy, very lengthy.
So we had Lori.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of said she was asking questions, not necessarily she sent the follow-up wanting to restate she wasn't necessarily an objection, but she just had questions um, about the proposal, so it's not really opposition, that's one we, yeah. Or I guess we did talk about that one, right, Lori?
Yeah, we talked about it in the thirty-eight.
So then we had Terry Atkins and McFalls for the opposition.
Yeah.
I'd like to get everybody's name into the record, so that they won't say at some later point in time, either whether they favor or don't favor, that they were ignored. So, we're always going to take the time to get them in.
Yeah, and I also am trying to read the addresses if they put them in there, thanks to their names, but they don't always do. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll do the opposition letters first from Terry Atkins at one eighty-four Rowayton Avenue. As we learned at the four seventeen twenty-five presentation, forty-six South Beach is asking for several variances. Unlike its neighbor thirty-eight South Beach, this house is not simply being lifted. I am a member of the R A Z, but I am writing to share my own personal views and preliminary suggestions regarding the proposed footprint scale and mass. See photo of the existing as-is house cat, which casts a large shadow on the street. Tammy, I don't know if you want to share these um, sketches?
Yeah, just give me one second.
Okay. Um, as she goes on to say, "With my lack of complete knowledge of the new zoning code, I trust the board to review all the proposed variances carefully. In my view, the most objectionable are, one, the enlargement of the footprint along the street to the north, east, and west. And two, the height increase particularly of the front facade along the street. Regarding my concerns listed above, one, I believe the stone garages can stay where they are within the existing footprint. The exterior steps can extend up to the proposed first floor by increasing the recess at the new front door. See sketch A."
Okay, I'm almost there.
Our timing was almost perfect.
I looked at the um sketches, and I didn't know that they would be very clear.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, but we're not at sketch A yet.
Yeah, yeah, I get there. All right, uh, sketch A.
Yep, okay, and then, next, two, "I also believe that the massive proposed front facade can be visually reduced by slicing off and sloping a section of the gambrel roof peak. See sketch B. Furthermore, the street facade can be visually articulated as two-point-five stories above the garage level, rather than three stories by combining the upper fenestration of the two-story stair hall. See sketch C. Thank you for your time prior to the next meeting." And then, the second letter is, here we go. The Maria and Kevin McFall. Um, and I'm not sure what, oh, their property is at ten Rocky Point Road. "They are very concerned about the above-mentioned project because it will take away a view from our property at ten Rocky Point Road. Not for a dwelling, but to add many new plantings for privacy, especially once the level of all is being raised to start with. I have lived on Bell Island for twenty years, and I can tell you that privacy on our tiny little island does not exist. Every neighbor can hear everyone, that is the charm, but to steal a water view for attempted privacy is not at all neighborly. And you will never have privacy from your neighbor's third-story balcony. This small neighborhood is meant for everyone's enjoyment, please reconsider the necessity of the growth of trees." Best, Maria and Kevin McFall.
McFall?
Yep.
And is that it? I thought, I thought I saw three. One might have just been a copy with somebody's signature on it.
These are the two I see in the, in the packet.
Yep. And then we had, uh, the attendees, we're ready to go with that. Okay, we have Bessie Kong. Are you still looking for that letter? You think there's another letter?
Okay, can I go?
Hang on one second, Bessie, I think Andy's trying to find a
I was looking to see if I had the three, because I remember seeing them, and two were identical, so it could have been just that one was doubled up. Let's go ahead.
Okay, Bessie.
Okay.
Um, hi, my name is Bessie Kong. I'm at twelve Pinoyar Street. I am also a member of R A Z. Um, and just to remind everyone, R A Z was created when. Quite a lot of Rowayton neighbors were confronted with unexpected development along Rowayton Avenue. Um, it's made us all very sensitive to a lot of, particularly variance requirements that come along. So um, I'm here in support of what Terry Atkins submitted, but also to voice some concerns. Um, while I'm not a neighbor of Bell Isle or a resident of Bell Isle. I um do walk along that area quite frequently. That current house as it exists is quite. Massive in the sense that it is right on the prop, front property line and um. So to raise it and to certainly keep. That. Position. Along the front, front yard line, um, or the front property line, really. Um, as well as to ask for variances along other of the required side and rear yard lines. Seems to me that it will in decrease the amount of light and um. Just air around that part of the neighborhood. Um, which makes it a less amenable situation for those that are. Living in the area as well as those that live in Rowayton and use. The scenic values of the other neighborhoods around us. You know. I think I heard here. Oliver, I think, said that. These variances make it impossible to conform to a lot of what FEMA proposes. But in fact. Variances are exceptions to the rule and which is why the hardship requirement is so important. Certainly with regard to height and with regard to side yards. That is. That is something that we've found has been very detrimental to the nature and quality of life in Rowayton. And I also have to remind people that the um, the planning department only recently. Just last summer, I believe, went through an extensive process of redoing the planning and zoning. Plan and had numerous public hearings. So, which are continued because there are always adjustments that need to be made, but this was a extensive public process. Um, to come up with the new requirements. And so I would like certainly to see that we can conform as much as possible. To um, the requirements that exist, and they do exist for some reason. So. The other. Just one other comment, and that is what I heard about a. Um, sort of this give and take in terms of what the. What the code is requiring and what you can give to try to get you as close to conformity as possible. Um, someone mentioned that. The maximum square footage is not being used, but isn't that because you have. Have this rock outcropping on the site, which makes it very difficult for you to use the the maximum square footage. So in effect, um, I think you said it was fifty-one hundred. Versus forty-seven hundred. Um, so in effect, you're not really giving in to anything. There are things that. Restrict you from using the maximum square footage. At least that's my understanding of it. Anyway, I do um. Accept what Mr. Conroy has said that um, height is a huge problem. And, and as well as the setbacks. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bessie.
Okay, did we have anyone else that wanted to raise their hand for, to speak in opposition? There's no one. No raised hands.
Are we done with the public input?
So, this is last opportunity to comment. If anyone wishes to speak, raise your hand. The call, the caller, if you want to speak, you got to press star nine. No raised hands.
Done? Okay, um. I'm almost comfortable but not quite, so. There are a number of variances requested, I think, need to be thought through. You sure you want to proceed tonight? I do think that it is appropriate to remove a structure. Making you more compliant and use that as a bit of an offset. Um, but you have a number of variances that you've asked for. And I think we have to think them all through, and I think you're well on the way to making sense of what you need. But I'm still not entirely sure, me personally. There's four other members of the board. They might not think what I'm thinking, so. Liz, do you want to proceed? Um, and if so, your crew might want to tell us some of the things they're going to do to reduce. Some of the other variances.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy, members of board and also members of the public for sharing your commentary. Um, I, I think it's appropriate for, for us to have a, if you want to call it a quick huddle so that. I don't speak out of turn. I'd like my client to be the one to say whether or not they deem it. To continue this one application. Or to move forward tonight for us to respond and rebuttal and provide additional commentary and explanation. But um, I, before we do that, I would appreciate it if I could have the opportunity to have Mr. and Mrs. Angelakis let me know what their preference is. Uh, while they're, if, while we're doing that, I certainly think that there are a few comments that were made by the public in the letters and in, in. Discussion tonight that we can respond to, and I think we can do our best to. Try to explain how that height variance is just something we, we, other than. Reconstructing this house, how it's, we're not going to be able to achieve that, that variant, with that, that height restriction. We're already at a lower FEMA.
Liz, Liz, Terry made a good suggestion. Take a look at her diagrams.
I'd have to leave that to our, our architects, not an architect. I would want to be the one to explain how those are, those diagrams are possible or not possible.
But anyway, I think you're making good progress and I'm not. Clobbering you guys. But I'm suggesting that there might be a little more thought put into reductions of the variances. If not, if not elimination.
We're, we're totally happy with removing, I guess, the oval part where the pool is and bringing that back. That's something that.
Three feet.
With three feet, we will, we will do, and I don't know how the, the board processes that, but we would certainly do that. You know, we've talked to all of our neighbors and shared our plans and, you know, all due respect to the folks who. Have two people who have spoken against it. They don't live in the neighborhood where actually they say they walk by the house. We're actually removing. The shed, which is a pretty big ice.
Yes, I agree.
In putting beautiful greenery there, it'll be a much more pleasant walk. And actually, so we're trying very hard. Uh, and removing the cupola is to, we're, we're not building out any extra square footage. We're, we're simply just trying to lift the house and deal with the complications of lifting the house. Just so you understand.
Say, I think going through all the variances, um, I just don't know if we can sit there and do that tonight. Because there are several. And I'm not so sure that you needed them all. Like, you've already mentioned a couple that you can um. Reduce or eliminate, and you've already done a good job with some others that you've reduced or eliminated. Um, I think you need to look at the roof line a little bit harder. Um, make it more pleasant and less looking like it came out of Germany. Um, there's, the front part of your roof is very bold, very, very bold. And as it goes up another fourteen, fifteen feet, then it becomes just massive looking. I mean, it almost looks like a castle.
It, I'm sorry, but it's going up like six, five point nine.
Fourteen feet, not fourteen feet.
Yeah.
So, so the problem in my mind is that we think through all the variances and figure out what we actually can't do and what we can do. I don't have that problem with the other properties.
But we have an opportunity just to. Talk about that?
I just don't know if we have enough time tonight to go through it, variance by variance. More wants to do that, I'm.
But if, if the height is the, is the primary issue, could we? Just take a minute to go back at the elevations, because even just the, the sketches that were just submitted with one of the letters. We can't bump the door in because our staircase that goes upstairs. At the house is at the front door. You would have to. Move our entire inner stairwell, which is a center staircase. That goes up, so it like, just simply being able to bump it back from. A sketch of the front of the house.
I know that Terry, Terry was being um. Went quite a ways in her suggestions, but the thing that I noticed that made some sense was the uh. Reduction, not reduction, the change of the roof line at the very top and in the front. She didn't change the whole roof. Just said if you bend it in at about forty-five degrees, that changes the entire look.
So again, again, I don't know if we have time just to show the front elevation. But part of this project is to actually make the house a lot prettier than. I think it was originally designed by a different architect with windows that are scaled more appropriately. For the scale of the house, and I, if you'd look at it, you might. See that we're actually.
I, I don't want to go through all the variances tonight. And we come up with an idea of how we're going to do this.
I have a question, suggestion. I think uh, our chairman is being quite clear that he suggests that a uh continuation for the second property is, is. It's probably a better way to go, and my question relates to if we were to vote on uh, the first property. Um, would, would that assist the applicants in moving ahead with the, the project? Because obviously, clearly there's a reluctance to have a second continuation on both projects, which is certainly understandable.
Yeah, I, I wasn't suggesting um, both. I was just suggesting forty-six.
Yes, exactly. I think that's a question for Tony Such and her clients.
And even on forty-six, I just think that if we, I don't know, this is not a naughty word. Just go look it up in the dictionary, dicker around with the various variances that we might come up to a much more satisfactory conclusion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the commission, unfortunately, Zoom is great for all of us to be able to. Arrive at, at the same place at the same time, but it doesn't lend itself to discussions that are necessary for suggestions such as Mr. Conroy. Between an applicant and his consultant, so you have to forgive me for not paying attention. We're trying to have this conversation through texts offline. But um, if you would bifurcate, as you said you would and as you need to. And deal with thirty-eight in and of itself, independent and decide your, make your decision since it appears as if. That is ready for action, we would certainly uh, welcome the additional time to bring this application back to you or for you to. Keep the hearing open for us to address some of the issues if we can. And it's a little bit better why the, why we cannot do what some people have suggested, so if that's what um.
Liz, Liz, I, I don't want to cite what you've already accomplished, and I think it came a long way on forty-six. I think we're there on thirty-eight. The other board members will have to agree with me, but I think we're there. On forty-six, I don't think we're quite there. I think, as I said, we have to dicker around the edges of the variances requested and make sure. We list them properly as to what's required, not what is now formally required. And so that takes a little more work, and we can't do it tonight because I've got other clients, so we got to get moving.
That's fine. Um, I would like to just address one issue that a neighbor raised, so it's off the, it's off the table and we don't have to deal with it next time. Since it's lingering out there, and that was the issue about rights to a view. Um, I just want the board to know that from as early as a case called Robinson versus Clapp, sixty-five Connecticut, three sixty-five. From eighteen ninety-five, Connecticut courts have consistently held that there is no right to a view. And most recently in Mayor versus Historic District Commission of Town of Groton, three twenty-five Connecticut, seven sixty-five, that's from two thousand seventeen. That case captured the line of previous cases which further established this position. The court held that property owners have no right to an unobstructed view from structures built on adjacent pop property. The only exception to this is where there's an express statutory provision, or there is a contract or restrictive covenant protecting the private right to a view or vista. None such exists for forty-six South Beach. Further, Connecticut statute, statute, section forty-seven twenty-five also prohibit the acquisition of a right to a view by adverse possession. So as to prevent an owner of adjoining properties from erecting or maintaining any buildings on their property. Moreover, rights to a view is not a zoning issue, but I just wanted that to be, this to be out there, that. Rights to a view have long since been established as not something that the Connecticut courts countenance. Um, and that was just a, a comment that was raised by one of the neighbors. However, having said that, uh, the landscape plan has been adjusted. So that attention is paid to, as best we can, to those who have enjoyed that view over the property over time. And it's no longer a grove of trees. There are a few trees, I believe, one on each side or two on each side. So the vista is going to be remaining as best as we possibly can, yet still provide the applicants some privacy and some greenery on that section of property.
Yeah, I think people don't understand that, but being people living in the community and you want to be good to your neighbors. Of course, that, that really is what figures in, not the idea there's air rights there because not in this state is that an existing principle.
Well, I think that's been demonstrated by the, the number of support letters from those immediately affected by this property. Who have been not only, uh, not only met the Angelakis', they've shared their plans, they've had the opportunity to discuss them with them, and they have come out and support. So, but I didn't want it to go without mentioning the, the issue about rights to a view, which come up frequently, but folks don't know what, what the law is and connected. So if you would continue this matter till next month, we will look at, again, at some of the comments. Maybe there will be a change in the regulations that. Eliminates the variance and we'll be back before.
We'll take the list of variances and take the discussion from tonight and apply it to the list of variances. And let's get a revised list of variances, okay?
But you're. Forty-six, just on forty-six.
Yeah, just on forty-six.
Yeah, we, we will do our best, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that's great. Now let me check with the board real quick. I would like to continue them a month. And let them work on the variances and restate them and hopefully improve on them. Uh, are you guys okay with that?
I support that.
I do have a comment, though, about the roof that I would like to make.
Sure.
Um, so I'm very familiar with waterfront living and waterfront building and FEMA lifts. I've done several myself. Um, I do not think that, I believe the woman's name was Terry. Um, I don't think her drawings are um, appropriate to offer to the homeowner. Uh, the homeowner has a certain style of house. They've made these drawings and spent a significant amount of. Money, it seems, to do that and to modify their existing house because FEMA requires them to lift it. To fourteen feet and then have the additional two feet. I don't think it's our job to cause them a hardship of finance to redo their second floor. Which I've heard been stated several times that they're living in it and there's no other changes being made to that floor, so. I just, I think the four-feet overage is something that just happens with math. And if they're unable to modify the lower floor level, because just like they were at thirty-eight, because they found the steel beam could be narrower. I mean, that's great if you can figure out how to do that on forty-six, but it doesn't sound like you can. Um, but I mean, I'm not in, you know, objecting to the forty-four in this case. Normally, yes, I would say we stick with forty. But this is just a matter of math. I mean, the house is at a certain level. It has to now be raised. Um, to the level plus the two feet for Norwalk, and that puts them at forty-four feet, so I just thought that was something that. You know, the board, we should be processing that instead of asking the homeowner to modify the second floor.
Okay, here's what we asked the homeowners to do. We asked them to stay within the existing footprint and not exceed forty feet. We will ask that of every.
Understand that.
And we don't, they don't have it as a right, which I think you know by now, to go right ahead and build it anyway. Um, if they didn't need a variance from us, they could just go out and redo it.
No, I understand. I was just, I was just stating that some math.
In a position of saying it will accept some and not accept another.
Understood, yes. I'm strictly so speaking about the height.
Yeah, I know, but uh, the reason I'm a stickler about the height is when I'm not a stickler about the height, they all come in with great increases in height and that ain't gonna fly.
Agreed.
And it, it, it happens over and over again. You, as longer you're on the board, the more you're gonna see it. Anyway, I, I think we've made progress and I think thirty-eight, in my view, is, is a doable item tonight. I think forty-six, just as I say, nibble around the edges of the variances, restate the variances and take another quick look, see what you can do. We've done this before a billion times, you know, maybe you'll bring it down to forty-three feet. I don't know. But anyway, the, the many, many times that we've done this, if you look hard, there's usually something that you can do. And I don't see you guys jumping up and down going yippee, so. Well, I think delaying it to next month, if that's a building problem for you, we'll get hopefully thirty-eight running. Um, and forty-six, I think that you can get there. It, it may not be entirely to my liking, but I think you can get there. And I'm one of five. There's four others who may not agree with me. So we all set? Okay.
Agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, so the board is doing it now. The attorney or the owner, one or the other, has to say that they agree to the continuance.
Yes, miss, yes, Mr. Chairman, on forty, yes.
Right, so Tammy, we will continue, um, forty-six to next month.
June twenty-sixth.
Um, they're Juneeenth, so, um, June.
June twenty-sixth, yeah.
No, no, Juneteenth, that forces us to go another week. So we're into the fourth week rather than the third. Done? Yep. All set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I want to move on to the next item. Danielle?
Yep.
Yeah, twenty-five, oh, five, fifteen, oh, one.
Yep.
Six-lane road and the number of folks sitting on the board for this decision would be not me, but Lee instead. And Danielle, Keith, Steve and Kathy. So I'm gonna walk away for a while. He is basically gonna take over and run this one, um, for six-lane road. You might even know where that is.
All right, twenty-five dash zero five, one five dash zero one, ACR Property LLC. Variances, front yard setback, thirty feet required at Lane Road, thirteen feet proposed and thirty feet required at East Rocks Road, eighteen point five feet proposed and thirteen feet to roofed entryway at Lane Road and parking within the front setback, thirty feet required at Lane Road, eighteen feet proposed and thirty feet required at East Rocks Road. Twenty feet proposed and back out space adjacent to Lane Road property line to construct a new single-family residence in CD one M zone. Property located at six-lane road, district one, block eighty-three, lot thirty-three, refer to town clerk map fourteen, three fifty-five depicting North parcel. Request applicant seeks front setback variances and relief of parking location location requirements to allow the construction of a new single-family residence on a vacant lot. Background, this vacant lot is a northern parcel of three lots now under common ownership. The current minimum lot area for CD one M is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. This lot is undersized at seven thousand one hundred and sixty-one square feet. However, the single ownership slash merge lot clause does not apply in this instance as the lot was created prior to the subdivision regulations as detailed in article one point twenty-one, point three, point B. Non-conforming laws created by deed, et cetera, prior to the subdivision regulations, analysis and findings. Application of the setbacks as prescribed under the current zoning regulations provides a very small building envelope. This is a corner lot with frontages on three sides. Each of the three fronting property lines require a thirty-foot setback. This reduced building envelope also presents challenges for the requirement for two zoning compliant parking spaces and an allowed back out space. The existing lot configuration, along with the regulatory changes affecting corner lots, could be deemed a zoning hardship. That's it.
Guess Andy dumped it in my lap to, to chair this, so I will. Will the representative for this application, Pete, please come forward, identify themselves?
I can't hear you, Patsy.
Hi, hello. Hi, hello. This is, uh, Arnaldo Coelho. I am the owner of ACR Properties. And.
Your address, sir.
And, uh, Patsy, it's my architect and, uh, she will address, uh, all the setbacks, uh, and what we asking the board uh, to consider for us.
Mr. Arnold, we can't hear Patsy. Um, she's muted. That's the problem. She's trying to, she's trying to have herself heard, but she's having a problem with her computer. That's all.
Oh, okay. All right. We'll wait there. Thank you.
Uh, we can't hear you, Patsy. We just see your lips moving.
And you're not actually muted, so it's maybe microphone disconnect or?
I, I have a thought, Arnold. Maybe you could call her on your cell phone and she probably talked to you on speaker and maybe it could come through your phone. I'm guessing it might be muffled, but it might.
I'm, I'm in my phone right now.
Okay.
I believe Zoom also has a call-in option.
Yes.
Be able to call in.
Yeah, Tim.
To join this hearing.
Tim, you think you share your screen and show her the Zoom number and, and, um, password? So maybe Patsy could call in on her phone.
Yep, yeah, give me just a second. I'll take me a minute to find it.
Can you see my screen?
Did you find it?
Yeah, I'm sharing right now. Could you see it or no?
Yes.
I could see it.
All right, Patsy, that's the number you can use. I think the password's in there. The dialing number.
So she calls the first line and then the webinar ID?
Yeah, then the webinar ID might be the way and she can get in. I'm just guessing.
If not, I guess we'll just have to push them till next month. If we can't move forward without the architect.
Okay, she's trying to call.
Oh, great.
So she's gonna, I need, can you stop sharing screens, Steve? Cause I need to
Sure.
See if she's coming in as a, as a attendee versus a. Yeah, I think we go, okay, so allowed to talk. Is this you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, but we get reverberation. Cause it comes back through your speaker.
Patsy, you have to, you have to, there you go.
Yeah. Okay, is this gonna work now?
We do hear you, but we do get feedback.
Um, uh, uh, is this better?
If you could just talk a little bit louder, then we can hear you.
Okay.
Oh, it's definitely gonna echo the whole time.
Yeah, so will everyone who's talking.
For this to work, everybody has to root their lungs. Can't hear you, Patsy. Try the other thing you just did just now. It says connect an audio, then it stopped. You want us to put the Zoom link back on for you, Patsy, again? The phone number to call in or?
Patty, maybe can you call me on my wife's cell number and I could put you in speaker? Maybe they could hear it that way? You wanna do that? Phone number is two zero three five one five five four two seven.
Sorry, I was muted. I wanted to warn you that that number is now gonna be part of public record and part of the recording. I don't have a way of editing that. It, it's possible Zoom. I don't know if they've got filters where they might catch that, but then they're gonna block the whole.
That's it. Okay, that's. All right, go ahead. Can you go ahead and speak? Can you guys hear her?
What?
Can you guys hear Patsy?
Yes.
It's very difficult.
Okay, I don't know.
I mean, if we can't resolve this right now, I think we're gonna have to put this, uh, item off until next month. I know it's disappointing, but, uh, it's a technical issue that we can't deal with.
But I agree, and I don't think it's fair to keep the other people waiting.
Yeah, Andy's on mute, sorry.
I got it. I was asking if you had the documents that you could display for the applicant.
No, I do, but I'm sure she has, uh.
Knowledgeable, uh, he can make his presentation. But if he doesn't, isn't knowledgeable enough and he really needs the other person that he hired, then we need to delay it till next month.
Right, he already deferred to his architect, so I think we have to defer it.
Okay.
Okay.
So per Lee, per Lee's suggestion, you guys go ahead and decide that you want to allow the continuance. Has to say yes, and then you guys are all set.
I'll make a motion that because of technical difficulties, we put this item off until the June meeting. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Uh, majority says that we put this item off until next month.
Okay. Arnold, you know what we're doing, right?
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, sorry to have to do it, but we can't hold a public hearing like this.
Yeah, it, you, you know, you can have a Zoom account for no money and you could get your professional to get on the Zoom account with you and just practice, make sure you can get it done.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Betsy.
Great. Back to where we were. So we have I think just, um, thirty-eight to deal with. Thirty-eight South Beach Drive, uh, twenty-five, oh, four, one, seven, zero, dash, oh, two. And, um.
Andy, I assume I'm not sitting on this?
Yeah, you're not sitting on this one.
Okay, I'd like to make one, it's gonna be a stupid comment.
All right, really?
Okay, they have placed a fire pit under the oak tree they're trying to save. That fire pit will cook that tree.
Yeah, probably.
And I recommend that it be moved or removed.
Yeah. Move or remove, do something besides cook it. Yeah. Good idea. Thanks, Lee.
Okay, I'm gonna say goodnight because I'm not needed anymore.
Good night, Lee.
Until next month, everyone. Thanks. Until next month, everyone. Thank you.
Um, so the five of us who are sitting and, and taking the decision, uh, myself, Danielle, Keith, Steve, and Kathy. Uh, I'm gonna open the discussion, cause I'm gonna move to accept, uh, the variances as requested with some changes, if we can remember what they are. Anybody wanna jump in? It's discussion time.
Keith, uh, you're muted.
I was gonna say, I'm ready to second, uh, the motion to accept with the changes, once we've illuminated them.
Yeah. Tammy, are you clear on what the variance changes are for thirty-eight?
I think so. I'll give it a try.
Well, we just have to be sure, cause we're gonna put it in the record.
Yep. So I, I think that we, the one need for variance was eliminated. Everything else remains the same. If I'm incorrect, please, somebody jump in. Um, yeah, I think we just removed the total height necessity because of that still being, being, um, not as tall.
Yeah. And you got some setback issues.
Yep, do me, I can look.
There's good things on thirty-eight and bad things on thirty-eight, and we said the good probably offsets the bad. But you gotta look at the variances and make sure we get it right.
Did you want me to list them for the record?
I think it would be a good idea. Um, I don't remember that we fiddled with the setbacks. Maybe my memory's failing me.
Actually, Tammy, it's helpful when, like, so for, what is it, forty-six, right? The staff memo was updated, so the, the list of variances was updated with their changes, but for thirty-eight, it wasn't.
Yeah. Well, thirty-eight was less of a problem, because they thought they could get in within the height requirements, and they thought they would stay within the boundary requirements that require of them, which is-
Yeah, I've just, I've noticed it happen a bunch. Like, sometimes the staff memos get updated when they make changes, and it's a continuation, and sometimes it doesn't. So I just think it's like helpful if we can always update it for anything that changes from the plan.
Changes during the meeting, then they can't possibly edit it again. So, um, the only thing that happened was that the variance, uh, for exceeding forty feet is eliminated.
Right. So it's the front yard setback, thirty feet required, three point six proposed. The building height, thirty-two required, thirty, now, so I don't know if this number also changed from the new elevation.
I don't think so.
Okay, so thirty-four point one eight feet. I think it would, though, lower.
Thirty-four, right, it's, sorry, it's thirty-four versus thirty-four point one eight.
Yeah.
The, it would be thirty-four instead of thirty-four point one eight.
Yeah. And- Um, and the front setback. Uh, the principal front setback, fifty feet required, seven point nine proposed for the garage. Secondary front setback, twenty feet required, point six proposed. Very parking in the front setback, thirty feet required, seven point nine proposed, and add the spa. Fifty feet required, forty-four proposed. So that's all of them.
All right. So anybody in the board have any issues with any of the other items that require variances? I think in general, the change in the garage is a possibility. Uh, safety issues of just having the door open right on the street is not a good thing. And this at least gives you about eight feet. Um, which is a possibility. And in general, other than the spa, I think I'm good with everything.
I'm fine, I'm fine with everything.
My battery is low, so that means we gotta make a decision within a few minutes.
What's your issue with the spa, Andy?
Pardon?
What's your issue with the spa?
I just don't, I didn't get into the dimensions on that, so if anybody else thought it all the way through and took a look at it, um, your comments are welcome.
I think we talked about it last time. Um, I just wanna pull up that plan.
Yeah. If I suddenly disappear, it means that I have to go get a brick.
You wanna show the screen?
Uh, it means that I run it out, yeah. This machine actually is, was, would, initially when I bought it, ran twelve hours. But over time, it changes.
We've been on eleven hours and thirty minutes?
Now, it doesn't last a three-hour ZBA meeting.
Yeah, the three hours to four hours ZBA meeting is what I was hoping I'd always be able to cover.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt you, and I know this is out of order, but one variance was not identified, and it was for the retaining walls.
Wasn't that for forty-six?
It was also for thirty-eight.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
But thirty-eight didn't need them because they're replacing in kind.
Oh, we, we requested them anyway, uh, just to be safe. So it was identified.
Okay.
Can you be specific quickly?
Required is five feet, proposed is zero feet, existing and proposed.
Um, did you wanna see the spa?
I wanted to know what other people's opinions were.
I mean, it's the, they moved it again back to be behind the VE line. So, the previous location where it did exist was in the VE line, and they moved it back to the AE line. And the reason that they couldn't move it further out was to protect the roots of the oak tree. That, uh, Lee noted that they might torch.
Do something else.
Right. I thought it was positive that they moved it out of the VE zone, so I was very happy with that. And I think protecting the trees are important.
Anyway, they could figure it out. They gotta-
Again, it's fully shielded from the street. You know, it's a front setback requirement, and it's fully shielded by the prop, by the house. So, I don't take an objection to this.
Um, nor do I.
With the changes to the variances that were requested, uh, uh, I'm gonna move this item. We're gonna be a second item, and that has to do with the required, um, additional motion for the, um, wetlands.
Oh, coastal segment.
Coastal, yeah. So, we, we're having moved it. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Danielle, second.
Everyone wants.
And everybody that wants it, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. Great. So Christine, you can go home and smile tonight. You got thirty-eight done. Um, yeah, I just think you gotta work a little on the other one. And we definitely have to have an update to, um, the variances requested in, in detail, just the way you did when you made your original application.
Well, we thank you all for your time. I know it's been, um, a long night. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Welcome to everyone.
Thank you.
Um, I, you know-
We'll see you next month.
Everything administratively until next time. Cause I don't think what we have, we don't have anything important happening administratively, other than the minutes, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Good. I'm gonna put the minutes off, and we'll deal with them next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Everyone.
I appreciate everybody's patience.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
How, how many?
All right. Have a good one.
I, I think the applicant doesn't know that I actually enjoy German architecture, but it's all right.
All right.
All right. So June twenty-sixth.
I'll, I'll be there then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Danielle.